Good evening. Before we begin tonight's meeting, we'll have a reflection led by a student. The student is Isabella LeBlanc. She is an eighth grade student at R.K. Smith Middle School and was recently honored as the R.K. Smith Student of the Year. In addition to maintaining excellent grades throughout the entire middle school career, Isabella is an active member of the Junior Beta Club, the R.K. Smith Robotics Team, the R.K. Smith 4H Club. She also serves as an officer of the St. Charles Parish 4H Junior Leaders Club. After Isabella's reflection, District Three Board Member Sky Cody will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the continued gift of education. Bless each and every one of your children to grow in knowledge daily. Thank you for continuing to guide the leaders of our school district as they make the decisions needed to fulfill the high expectations of this parish. May each student continue to gain the knowledge necessary to become competent citizens of this community. Help each one of us fulfill our destiny. I ask that you continue to bless this school year for every employee and their families. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Isabella. You did a great job. Have a great school year. Called the meeting of October 25th, 2020 to St. Charles Parish School Board to order, and let it be on record that all board members in attendance, along with our Superintendent Dr. Ken Ortling and Board Secretary Ms. Shelley Babino. The first item on the agenda is 2.01, which is Resolutions and Proclamations. And can Ms. Becky Weber, can you please read that?
It's my honor, Mr. President. National Principals Month proclamation. Whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board has declared the month of October 2023 as National Principals Month in coordination with the efforts of the National Association of Elementary School Principals, the American Federation of School Administrators, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals. And whereas principals are expected to be instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives, as well as being entrusted with the education and development of young people and the most valuable resource. And whereas principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to maintain high curriculum standards and set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence. And whereas St. Charles Parish School Board honors such exemplary elementary and secondary-level public school leaders committed to serving students and through pre-kindergarten to grade 12. And whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board recognizes outstanding elementary, middle, and high school principals who have succeeded to providing high-quality learning opportunities for students, as well as making contributions to their profession. Whereas to honor and recognize the contribution of all school principals and assistant principals at all grade levels, ensuring that every child has this access to a high-quality education. Whereas to, now therefore be it resolved that in honor of the service of all principals and to recognize the importance of their school leadership so that every child has access to high-quality education and to celebrate school leader accomplishments, the month of October 2023 is hereby designated in St. Charles Parish to be National Principals Month. Mr. President, I move for this proclamation of National Principals Month.
Second. Sub a motion by Mrs. Weber, a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion?
Mr. President, can I please say something?
Yes, ma'am.
For being a former principal, I know the job, how it is, and how difficult. And I just want to tell you from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate and value everything each and every one of you do. I am so proud that you are the ones that have been chosen and that you have chosen us to work in our school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd also like to echo a few words to my outstanding, to our outstanding principals. Just take a moment to express my sincere appreciation and gratitude for your continued dedication and leadership and for always being all-in. Your tireless efforts inspire both our students and our faculty and staff. You ensure our students learn in a safe nurturing environment and are provided the highest-quality educational opportunities in and outside the classroom that empower them to become enthusiastic lifelong learners. Your sacrifice to serve, and most importantly, you always serve first. We are beyond fortunate to have each and every one of you as principals. You leading our schools is excellent. Thank you for what you do each and every day. Thank you for your hard work and passion for education. Thank you.
Being none, please cast your vote to adopt this proclamation. And the board has approved this proclamation. Next up is 2.02, which is Red Ribbon Week proclamation. And Mr. Suffering, could you please read that for us?
Thank you, Mr. President. Even though it's tough to follow the principals, it's my pleasure to present this proclamation. Red Ribbon Week proclamation. Whereas all children in St. Charles Parish are entitled to attend a school free of drugs and violence, and whereas we are committed to nurturing the full potential of St. Charles Parish youth, and whereas the Department of Education and statewide drug-free schools and communities personnel believe in and strive for a school environment free of drugs and violence, and whereas all citizens of St. Charles Parish join with the teachers, administrators, and parish and state officials in encouraging our youth to become productive citizens and to maintain healthy lifestyles. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board does hereby support October 23rd through the 31st, 2023, as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages its school officials to participate in drug awareness activities and be strongly committed to drug-free, healthy lifestyles. And be it further resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board encourages all of the students in St. Charles Parish to pledge to be kind to your mind, live drug-free. And I move for approval of this proclamation.
Sub a motion by Mr. Suffering, a second by Ms. Weber. Any discussion? And that proclamation's adopted. Before moving on, I think we have someone that wanted to say something about our principals. One of our directors, Ms. Angel Babino, if you could come up, please, and Dr. Scheck Snyder, and say the things that we kind of went a little too quickly while we moved on, so.
That's not a problem. Thank you so much for inviting us both up here. We definitely agree with all of the wonderful things that have been stated about our principals. They are phenomenal. They are dedicated, and they are all-in at all times. And so we just want to take a moment to recognize them and ask them to come up for a photo. For elementary, Carol Bowie Cotton. Shannon Diodnae. Shonda Harris. Rebecca Mathurn. Christina Mullins. Kelly Ortling. Lisa Perrin. Vanessa Terry. And Nikki Weber.
And the secondary principals, Harold Blood. Sean Dwyer. Elaine Fitzgerald. Jose Gonzalez. Jason Madair. Mr. Madair is also our District's Principal of the Year. And LaSanne Porter.
So it was nice to recognize our principals, and now it leads to segue. Next part of our meeting is recognition. So next is recognition, 3.01. This is the Board and Superintendent's recognition.
Students. Desherhan High School students are National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. Employees. Central Office Employees is nominated by the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences for a Regional Emmy for the production of Trailblazers, a St. Charles Parish Public Schools documentary. Mason Dauphin.
It shows the quality of our district when you have employees being nominated for Emmys, and we have National Merit Scholar recipients, you know, in the audience as well. So, great job. We're going to take a short recess, so anyone that wants to leave can, and didn't want to stay for the business portion of me, uh, meeting, and then we resume in about one minute. Okay. Call the meeting back to order. Next up on the agenda is the Business Items, 4.01, which is Board Meeting Minutes of September 18th, 2023 Committee Meetings, September 20th, 2023 Board Meeting, and October 6th, 2023 Board Retreat.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes of the September 18th Committee Meeting, September 20th Board Meeting, and October 6th Board Retreat.
A second.
Sub a motion by Mr. Suffering, a second by Ms. Boudreau. Any discussion? And our meetings, uh, minutes have been approved. Next is 4.02, which is the Purchase of Metal Detectors. In a continuing effort to enhance the district's safety and security protocols, the Department of Physical Plant Services is requesting authorization to purchase 14 metal detectors using the 2023 TIPS Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. This agenda item is reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, and is aligned with GO E of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the purchase of those 14 metal detectors at a cost of $249,515.28.
Second. So a motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Suffering. Any board discussion?
Mr. President, I just wanted to add that this, this was done with a lot of research. I wanted to thank Cade and his group for doing that, but also getting the input from parents and students and faculty as well. This was not something that was made by one or two people. Um, and so I really want to thank y'all for being as thorough as y'all were, because it changed a lot of minds on this, mine included, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. Anyone else? And that item passes. Next is 4.03, which is a Resolution and Act of Property Donation, Lot 5-5A of land adjacent to Hornville High School. The owners of Lot 5-5A land adjacent to Hornville High School contacted St. Charles Parish Public Schools regarding a potential property donation. In order to execute a property donation, a Resolution and Act of Property Donation, Lot F-5A must be approved. This agenda item is reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, and is aligned with GO E of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the resolution and the Act of Sale, Act of Property Donation of Lot F-5A of the land adjacent to Hornville High School.
Second. Uh, so I have a motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Suffering. Any discussion? I'd just like to say that the Pugliese family is the owners of this property, and I'd like to thank them for their donation of this land. Not exactly sure if anything can be used for it, but it definitely gives us a barrier of, uh, at Hornville High School, so I'd like to thank the Pugliese family for their donation. If no other discussion, please cast your vote. And that resolution's approved. Next is 4.04, which is Bid Acceptance for Destran High School Career and Technical Education Facility Improvements. The Destran High School Career and Technical Education Facility Improvements Project is an approved project under the 2022 Bond Issue. The construction budget for the Career and Technical Education Facility at Destran High School is $3.75 million. Bids were received from six contractors on Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. The lowest bid was received from Taylor Enterprises of Louisiana, LLC, TELLA Construction, in the amount of $3,495,000. According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements. Accepting the lowest bid will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item is reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, and is aligned with GO E of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the lowest bid, lowest base bid submitted by Taylor Enterprises of Louisiana, and, um, for the, um, Career and Technical Education Facilities Improvement Project at a cost of $3,495,000.
Second. So I have a motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Suffering. Any board discussion? And 4.04 is approved. 4.05 is another bid acceptance. The Hornville High School Career and Technical Education Facility Improvement Project is an approved project under the 2022 Bond Issue. The construction budget for the Career and Technical Education Facility Improvements Project at Hornville High School is about $4.5 million. Bids were received from five contractors on Tuesday, October 17th, 2023. The lowest bid base, the lowest base bid, including alternate number one and alternate number two, was received from Taylor Enterprises of Louisiana, LLC, TELLA Construction, in the amount of $4,332,000. According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements. Accepting the lowest bid, including alternate number one and alternate number two, will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item is viewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, and is aligned with GO E of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the lowest base bid, including alternate number one and alternate number two, submitted by Taylor Enterprises of Louisiana for the Hornville High School Career and Technical Education Facility Improvements Project at a cost of $4,332,000.
Second. Sub a motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Suffering. Any board discussion? And 4.05 is approved. 4.06, sixth, is another bid acceptance. The Satellite Center Career and Technical Education Facility Project is an approved project under the 2022 Bond Issue. The construction budget for the Career and Technical Education Facility at the Satellite Center is $5 million. Bids were received from four contractors on Friday, October 20th, 2023. The lowest bid was received from Penn Tail Contracting Services, LLC, in the amount of According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements. Accepting the lowest bid will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item is reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, and is aligned with GO E of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the lowest base bid submitted by Penn Tail Contracting Services for the Satellite Center Career and Technical Education Facility Project in the amount of $4,120,000.
Second. Sub a motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Suffering. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I would just like to note, um, for these three bid acceptances for the Career and Technical Facility Projects, there was real good competition for the three projects, and, um, and that really benefited the district, because I think, uh, all total, I think we came in under about $2 million plus over, uh, under budget. Uh, I think the budget, I think, was like $15 million and change, and I think, um, for these three projects, I think they came in total for like $12 million and change. So the competition really benefited the district to, uh, for these projects to come in under budget.
Thank you, Mr. Suffering. Any other discussion? And that item passes. Next on the agenda is 4.07, which is the Purchase of School Buses. In a continuing effort to upgrade the district-owned bus fleet, the Transportation Department is requesting authorization to purchase buses under state contract. Two buses equipped for transporting Head Start students and five regular 65-passenger buses are being requested. This agenda item is reviewed at the Transportation Committee of the Board on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, and is aligned with GO B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the purchase of two buses equipped for transporting Head Start students and five regular 65-passenger buses using the 2023 state contract submitted by Ken Mitchell Bus Sales and Services, LLC. Can I get a second?
Can I get a second? So I have a motion by Mrs. Boudreau, and a second by Mrs. Weber. Uh, any discussion?
Just one question. Uh, just wanted to find out whether or not the state contract bid price that we've got, um, how competitive it was with the individual prices that we've been getting?
Ms. Teresa Brown?
Good evening. Mr. Smith, can you repeat that question for me?
Just wanted to, uh, know if you had that information on hand, uh, how competitive it was. We talked about the average price of a school bus. Regular bus was about 100 grand, right? Um, how competitive was the state contract bid to the bids we've been getting going out on our own?
So the price of a regular bus is actually a little higher than 100,000. It's around 127 this year. Last year was around 116 on our bid price. However, we have seen substantial increases throughout the year, probably three to four price increases from the supplier, anywhere from 4.5% or higher. Um, so I do think that when you compare a bid price to the state contract price, it's, it's very comparable. It may be a few pennies off, a few hundred dollars off. It's not much of a difference. So it really is a win-win for us to be able to purchase off a state contract rather than go through the bid process. Does that answer your question?
It answered my question. I was just concerned about whether or not, uh, since there were more people involved with the state contract bid than us going out individually, it appears that, as you said, there's not much difference. So the only really big benefit to us in, in this purchase is that, um, we don't have the, um, the work necessary to go out for bid on our own and that sort of thing. It saves us that, but it doesn't really, uh, equate to a considerable savings as far as pricing is concerned, when it appears that it should, because you, you, you're talking about the state servicing all of the school districts across the state, uh, and this is similar to what we did with the consortium when we tried to do the consortium. So we're not, we're not reaping any big price differentials.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brown, and Mr. Smith. Um, so I have a motion by Ms. Boudreau, a second by Ms. Weber. I'd also like to point out the cost of these is, for the two Head Start buses is $279,232.96, and for the five regular 65-passenger buses, it's $637,782.40. At this time, please cast your vote. And that item's approved. Next on the agenda is 4.08, which is a Request for Proposal for Internet Access and Wide-Area Network Connection. District Internet Access and Wide-Area Network Connection services are critical to facilitate business functionality, support teaching, and provide web-based instructional resources. Eligibility for E-Rate Funding is contingent upon completion of the former request for proposals processes within application timelines. If attained, E-Rate Funding will significantly reduce the cost of these services to the district. This agenda item is reviewed at the Technology Committee Meeting of the Board on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, and is aligned with GO D of the Board's Strategic Plan. Mr. President, I move-
Mr. President, I move that we authorize the request for proposals for Internet access and wide-area network connection.
Second. So I have a motion by Mr. Gregson, a second by Mr. Alexander, any board discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 4.08's approved. Next is 4.09, which is the 2024 and '25 school session calendar for the first reading. School Board policy mandates that the school board shall adopt a calendar for the forthcoming school session. A committee composed of school board members, business and industry representatives, central office administrators, principals, teachers, parents, and students prepare a calendar for board approval in accordance with our policy and procedures. Adoption of the calendar for the forthcoming school year as early as possible allows for the information to be sent out to all stakeholders in a timely fashion. This agenda item was reviewed at the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee meeting of the Board on Tuesday, October 24, 2023, and is aligned with GOs A and F of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the proposed '24, '25 school session calendar for the first reading.
Second. Okay, so I have a motion by Mrs. Weber, a second by Mr. Gregson, any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And the first reading for next year's school calendar has been approved. Next is 4.10, which is Education Excellence Fund update. The district currently employs four math interventionists, one at each middle school. Last year, three of these were funded by the state's Education Excellence Fund, the EEF grant. The state typically does not provide the amount of allocation to local education agencies until October of the current school year. This year, the allocation to the district is $188,576, a reduction of $54,527. As a result, the district will be required to pay the salary and benefits of one additional math interventionist through the general fund. This agenda item was reviewed at the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee meeting of the Board on Tuesday, October 24, 2023, and is aligned with GO A of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the district's supplementation of the Education Excellence Funds in order to fully fund the existing middle school math interventionist positions at a cost of $78,333.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Weber, a second by Mr. Gregson, any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next is 4.11, revision of Board's Policies 1.4.5, which is public participation at school board meetings for the second reading and adoption. Upon review of Board Policy and Procedure 1.4.5, which is public participation at school board meetings, revisions required as mandated by law. This agenda item was viewed and accepted for a first reading at the September 20th, 2023 Board Meeting, and is aligned with GO B of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the revisions to Board Policy and Procedure 1.4.5, public participation at school board meetings for a second reading and adoption.
Second. There are a motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Gregson, any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 4.11's approved. Next is 4.12, which is personnel items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of the St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the Board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Tuesday, October 24, 2023, and is aligned with GO C of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to receive the personnel items as presented to the Board.
Second. There are a motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Gregson, any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. 4.12's approved. 4.13 is the declaration of surplus vehicles, tools, equipment, and furniture. Various vehicles, tools, equipment, and furnishings have been identified to be considered as surplus by the school board. The district should declare these items as surplus to allow the Board to dispose of them in accordance with all legal requirements. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Tuesday, October 24, 2023, and aligns with GO D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we declare vehicles, tools, equipment, and furnishings as surplus and authorize disposal in accordance with legal requirements.
A second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Mrs. Boudreaux, any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 4.13 is approved. Next is 4.14, state-funded differentiated compensation stipends. The Louisiana Legislature has appropriated funds for public school districts to pay differentiated compensation stipends to teachers who qualify under guidelines established by the state, including mentor teachers and teacher leaders. The district will use the state allocated funds to pay its mentor teachers and/or teacher leaders in accordance with the district's salary schedules during the 2023-2024 school year. The state allocated funds may be used during the 2024-2025 school year. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Tuesday, October 24th, and is aligned with GO C and D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the state-funded differentiated compensation stipends in the amount of $433,814, and I'd just like to note that all of these funds are provided by the state.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Ms. Boudreaux, any discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And 4.14 is approved. Final item is 4.15, which is accounts payable for the month of September 2023. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Request for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was viewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, and is aligned with GO D of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of September 2023 in the amount of $6,906,115.
A second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Ms. Boudreaux, any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. That concludes the business portion of our meeting, but next is our closing item, which is 5.01, which is standing committee reports. If a chair of any committee would like to share a report of their monthly committee meetings, please do so at this time.
Sure, Mr. President. The Technology Committee, that consists of me, Mr. Scott Cody, Ms. Becky Weber, met on Tuesday, October 24th. We discussed the request for proposals for Internet access and wide-area network connection that the Board approved earlier this evening. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson.
Mr. President, the Personnel and Policy Committee met Tuesday, October 24th. This committee consists of Mr. John Smith, Mr. Murray Gregson, and myself. Assistant Superintendent Teresa Weber presented the updated personnel notes, and it's worth noting that the district's preemptive measurements to secure qualified pipelines of employees and teachers has allowed this district to maintain a level of service to our students and parents that's truly unparalleled in our area. All you have to do is go talk to some folks outside of our district, listen to the daily struggles they have with not only teacher shortages, but bus interruptions. They have to deal with this on a constant basis, and thanks to all those responsible for keeping our district properly staffed and operational, it does not go unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cody.
Mr. President, the Finance and Audit Committee, consisting of myself, Mrs. Boudreaux, and Mr. Alexander, met on Tuesday, October 24th, and we covered three items. All three of those items came to the full board during this meeting and were approved. Those three items were the declaration of surplus vehicles, tools, equipment, and furniture, the state-funded differentiated compensation stipends, and accounts payable for the month of September 2023, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin.
Mr. President, the Capital Improvements Committee met last night, October 24, 2023, and that committee consists of myself, Mr. Al Sufferin, and Mr. Art O'Quinn. There were seven items on our agenda, two of which were for committee meeting only. Those two items were the revised architect and engineer vendor selection process and the central office renovation and expansion project update. The remaining five items were all approved here tonight, and they are, one, the purchase of metal detectors, two, the resolution and act of property donation for the land adjacent to Hornville High School, three, the bid acceptance for the Hornville High Career and Technical Education Facility Improvement Project, with, wait a moment, number four was the bid acceptance of the Destran High School Career and Technical Facility Improvements Project, and the last item was bid acceptance request for the Satellite Center Career and Technical Educational Project. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
Mr. President, the Transportation Committee did in fact meet on Tuesday. It is Mr. Ellis Alexander as well as Ms. Becky Weber, and we discussed the purchase of the seven new school buses that approved tonight, and I'd also like to welcome our new Director of Transportation, Mr. Gordon Terrell. Welcome to the team. We are excited about the knowledge and experience you bring to this district, and we want to thank, I personally want to thank the department, especially Ms. Brown, for holding down the fort while we waited for him to join us. And I also had the pleasure of celebrating National Bus Safety Week last week by riding with Mr. Hootat, and I just want to personally thank all of the drivers for everything they do to keep our kids safe on the way to and home from school, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Boudreaux.
Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee met on October 24th, 2023. Committee members who were in attendance was Mr. Gregson, Mr. Smith, and myself. Two agenda items were discussed, and both items were approved tonight, and I would like to thank Ms. Alexis Cannon for the work she did for the upcoming 2024-25 school calendar for our first reading, and looking forward to making sure this passed.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. Anyone else? Well, moving right along, 5.02 is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The website niche.com has released its 2024 rankings of the best schools and school districts in the country. This recognition takes into account more than just test scores. The 2024 rankings have St. Charles Parish Public Schools as the number four best school district in Louisiana and earning the number one spot in almost every category in the New Orleans area. These noteworthy rankings highlight the shared commitment of our students, employees, and community in its expectation of excellence. Some of those rankings include number one best school district in New Orleans and number four in Louisiana, number one best school district for athletes in the New Orleans area, number two in Louisiana, number one most diverse school district in the New Orleans area, and number three in Louisiana, number one district with the best teachers in the New Orleans area, and I would beg to differ, we are the number one district in the state with the best teachers, and then number two best places to teach in the New Orleans area. This information will be shared with the community on our social media pages and website. This recognition is a credit to the strong leadership of our Board, our students' hard work, our employees' dedication, and our community's support of public education. You can view our complete rankings at niche.com. The Satellite Center is hosting an open house and community showcase on November 14th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. This event is open to the community and will provide you with the opportunity to explore the facility, learn about the available courses, and interact with current students and facilitators. Ochna representatives will also be present on campus to provide information on health and vaping education. As a reminder, daylight savings ends on November 5th at 2:00 a.m. Remember to set your clocks back an hour. And as Halloween approaches, we want to remind our students to stay safe while enjoying the evening. It's important to keep your parents', guardians', or other trusted adult cell phone numbers with you in case you ever feel uncomfortable with your surroundings or the actions of those around you. Additionally, be mindful of the permanency of social media and picture sharing. Anything posted or sent can have lasting consequences. Remember, your future is bright, so don't let one night of fun compromise it. And if you feel frightened or threatened at any point, don't hesitate to contact the sheriff's office or police. Stay safe and have a happy Halloween. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Orling.
I move to adjourn.
So I have a motion by Ms. Boudreaux, a second by Ms. Weber to adjourn. Is there any objection? We stand adjourned.